The October 10, 2019, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Ms. Bertram, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Maslin.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
Mayor Freiling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Here.
Mr. Zhang.
Here.
We have before us the council meeting minutes from the city council work session dated September 9, 2019. Are there any changes?
Yes.
Okay. Who wants to speak up?
Have they been made?
The changes you requested have been made.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
abstained because I don't know what the changes were.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
We have no matters of special privilege today, but we do have several public hearings, the first few of which involve my employer, the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, so I will not participate in that, and I'll turn the gavel over to Mr. Pons.
Thank you all. PCR, as you may have heard by now, PCR number 19-014 and 19-015 request of Colonial Williamsburg Foundation for a special use permit. Those applications have been withdrawn on behalf of the request of the applicant, so we won't be addressing that, and maybe they'll come back in the future, but I think Colonial Williamsburg has decided that they wanted to wait until the new leadership was appointed or put in seat at the foundation and then maybe bring up the subject later. But while I got the microphone on this, I just want to thank city staff, the staff at Colonial Williamsburg, and all the residents who really worked hard on this issue and trying to find a path forward that was a win-win for everybody. I think a lot of time and effort was put into this, so thank you very much for that. And since I have the gavel, we'll go right into item number C, which is another request of the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation for a special, for an application for a long-term special event license for the ice rink. Turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'm trying to find my staff report here. If you'll hang on one second.
Item number C.
This is, this is an application by the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation to reinstall the Liberty Ice Rink, ice skating rink in the right-of-way of Duke of Gloucester Street near 311 West Duke of Gloucester Street. This will be done exactly as it has been done in the past. This request is for another three-year long-term special event permit. Their previous special event permit granted by resolution number 16-14 expired in 2019. So if granted, this would allow them to continue it through 2022, I believe. The hours of operation are the same, 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday. They have a special set of holiday hours from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and on New Year's Eve, the hours will be 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. Each year, the rink will be installed on or about November the 1st and will be taken down and removed on or about February 28th, with the exception of 2020, which is leap year, in which case they will go to February 29th. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Before I open the public hearing, are there any questions for Mr. Trivitt? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearings. If anybody would like to come forward and speak at the microphone to this issue.
I'll have questions for the applicant later.
Okay. Please come forward. Okay. Well, seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and come back to city council. Mr. Maslin, would you like to ask those questions now?
Sure.
If the, Mr. Duncan, if you don't mind coming forward and answering a couple of questions, I'd appreciate it.
I have a couple also.
Okay, thank you. Go first.
He has deferred to me.
Ms. Ramsey.
So, thank you, and I just had a couple of questions. Do you have a number of skaters that utilized the rink last year or averaged over the past three years?
It has averaged in the range of 15,000 to 20,000 skaters per year, so it's been very successful, and we're very happy to bring those folks downtown.
And I would assume that that's a mix of residents, visitors, but is there any way to calculate the percentage of tourists versus visitor, residents?
Only anecdotally, and I would say it skews more heavily to locals.
And it says in the application that there are no changes requested from what it was last year, and I know, I guess it was two years ago, you all made some tweaks with landscaping, but nothing even in that realm for this year.
Two years ago, we installed hedging with lights installed in it and Christmas trees around the corners, and it'll look exactly the same as it has the last two years.
Well, not a question, but just a comment, that all the times that I've been down there where the ice skating rink is in use, it's been very vibrant activity, and it has brought a lot of people and brings a lot of joy, particularly to the children, so thank you.
A couple of questions. Would this skating rink fit in front of the museums?
On the street or on the lawn?
On the lawn.
Of course, sure.
What about, would it fit 100 feet away in the P5 parking lot?
Don't think it would fit in P5 because of the way the medians are built into the parking lot behind Kimball Theater and between Barrett's and Mellow Mushroom, for example. I think it would be difficult to fit it there.
What about the P4 parking lot, behind the restrooms?
Same reason that it wouldn't fit in P5. I think it would be difficult without taking out parking medians and that sort of thing for it to fit back there. And the other, just point to comment on is, the infrastructure for the ice rink is installed permanently, running from off of Duke of Gloucester Street to under the street, coming up in a vault right there where the rink has been for the last few years. So there would also need to be some investment if we were to install it at another location.
But that would have been the case, would it not, if you had put it in a P3 as one of the considerations?
That's correct.
Yeah. But looking at the importance of the Duke of Gloucester Street as an access from the Renn Building to the Capitol, can you comment on that in terms of, you know, what we're doing to that important access by putting the skating rink there?
Well, the access is only pedestrian access. The ice rink itself and the decorations we put up goes up around the holidays and comes up, comes out around Presidents' Day in February. I think it adds to the vibrancy of downtown, adds to the vista coming from the Renn Building and leading into the historic area. Most of our interpretation doesn't start until after you cross Nassau Street.
Is this area within the National Register of Historic Places?
If the historic area is with, is within the National Register of Historic Places, then yes, because this is within the historic area.
Do they, do they have any restrictions on doing something like this here?
Not that I'm aware of, but that's not something I've researched.
The, so CW, we see it's two faces. We've got the nonprofit and the for-profit. So which of those two organizations is actually the applicant here?
The foundation, Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, the not-for-profit.
The not-for-profit. And so if it's the not-for-profit, how is it enhancing the mission of the not-for-profit in terms of interpreting the Duke of Gloucester Street as a colonial capital?
I'm not sure that that is the intention of the ice rink itself, is to advance the mission of interpreting 18th century Williamsburg.
So it's, it's not advancing the mission of the nonprofit?
Only to the extent that ticket sales and other sales related to the ice rink ancillary sales for additional folks coming downtown, shopping in Merchant Square, to the extent that that additional funding supports the mission of Colonial Williamsburg, then it does go towards that.
So it seems to be more directly supporting the for-profit Colonial Williamsburg in terms of Merchant Square?
Merchant Square is not part of the for-profit. Merchant Square is part of the foundation, the 501(c)(3).
Okay. No, oh, no other questions right now?
Mr. Zhang.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan, for being here today. You've seen the numbers from the past three years when we, when this council had granted you a special, long-term event, special events permit, and you had basically said earlier that it has mostly attracted locals. So is there any plan for continuing to enhance that local visitation, that spot from, you know, the region or from Virginia, or are you planning to expand marketing efforts to attract folks from out of state?
I don't see, I don't see us as expanding the marketing reach just to try to bring folks to Williamsburg for an ice rink. I think this is more an amenity for downtown Williamsburg that locals can find another reason to come downtown, especially after the holidays, January and February, as anyone who lives here knows, is not very active downtown Williamsburg, and this provides another reason for locals to come downtown.
Thank you.
I've got a question for staff when appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. I appreciate you coming up. So, Mr. Maslin, you want to go ahead and ask your questions for staff, and then we can...
Yeah, and I don't know if this is legal counsel or city manager, but the, this ordinance says the proposed activity should not be designed to advertise a product or primarily intended to generate a private profit. Could you just comment on the review there?
Sure. I think, you know, my thought on this is that, as Mr. Duncan said, this is a venture of the foundation, and revenues generated go back to the foundation to support their overall mission. So it's, to me, it's different than if it were a private company advertising as a for-profit, which we don't allow.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So just for general comments, I support this. I think this type of activity not only supports the foundation, but it supports the community at large, but specifically as it relates to the foundation and its mission, I think, inviting people to the historic area, whether they buy a ticket or not, so that those folks can, can take in the magistry, the history of Colonial Williamsburg, supports its mission. So for that, I do think it's, it's great, but anybody that's been down there in the evenings to participate at the ice rink can't help but think of that Norman Rockwell moment when you're ice skating on Duke of Gloucester Street, and just how wonderful that experience is. I haven't done any ice skating, afraid of falling, but lots of people enjoy it, and I think it's something that is a benefit for us, and so I look forward to supporting that.
I also support the special event permit. I think it adds a wonderful amenity to downtown. I know a lot of younger families utilize it for their younger children. Speaking for myself, with my Bible group over at the law school, it gives my classmates another reason to linger around in Colonial Williamsburg in the historic area a little bit more, and I think that's probably true for a majority of the younger generation, whether it's an undergrad, whether it's younger professionals, or in the law school or some sort of grad school here, so I'd support this too.
I as well support it. I, I think it's gratifying to know how many skaters use the ice rink over the years. That's a great number of people that come downtown and use the rink and linger and do other activities in the Merchant Square area, so I look forward to it being erected again this year.
Yeah, I also support it. The only comment I've heard is that maybe it's too small.
All right. With that, Mr. Chair, I move that the city council approve resolution 19-15 and associated long-term special events license agreement as drafted.
Second.
Ms. Bertram.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Abstained.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
That takes us to item D on the agenda, PCR 19-016, the text amendment to define outdoor event space and to allow an outdoor event space with a special use permit in the downtown business district, B1. Ms. Murphy?
Mr. Vice Mayor, and members of the city council, Colonial Williamsburg on behalf of Barrett Seafood Restaurant and Tap House Grill is requesting a text change and special use permit for an outdoor event space at 199 South Bounder Street. The request is for live music, both acoustic and amplified, on Sundays from 12 to 3 and nightly from 6 to 9 from May through October. The applicant proposes using an eight-foot-by-eight-foot stage elevated about 18 inches off the ground with an electrical source at the stage. All equipment will be kept on the stage and not placed on the ground or surrounding areas. The 2013 comp plan designates this parcel as downtown commercial, which is a land use category intended to promote a variety of business uses in the downtown planning area. I included the statement of intent for the B1 downtown business district and the special use permit requirements. The architectural review board conceptually reviewed and approved the stage conditioned upon horizontal siding being, being installed to hide the undercarriage of the stage and the entire structure being painted Ocean Storm to match the Tap House Grill color at their August meeting. How this request originated was the applicant submitted a minor site plan for a patio which included the stage. Since this type of use is not listed in the zoning ordinance, the use is not permitted. Staff notified the applicant a text change would be needed, which resulted in the two applications before you today. The proposed definition for an outdoor event space is an outdoor space located on the property of and used by the owners or operators of a restaurant in conjunction with such restaurant use not to exceed 1,500 square feet, which contains a stage or designated performance area and seating in which live music and entertainment is performed. Barrett's proposes to construct a new patio containing 936 square feet adjacent to the eight-by-eight-foot stage. Approximately 300 square feet of outdoor dining exist outside of Tap House Grill, which equals about 1,300 square feet of total outdoor space. They propose to hold live music acts of one or two members on the stage as shown on the overhead, with all equipment to be located on the stage. The use of the space for small venues for a restaurant is appropriate and will be, will add to the vibrancy downtown and is in harmony with the comprehensive plan. Planning Commission held a public hearing at their September meeting. Other than the applicant, no one spoke. Planning Commission recommended to city, to city council for PCR 19-16, approval of proposed ordinance 1919 to define an outdoor space and to allow an outdoor event space in the downtown business district B1 with a special use permit. For PCR 1917, Planning Commission recommends approval of the special use permit for an outdoor event space at Tap House Grill to contain a stage eight-by-eight-foot and new patio as shown on the enclosed conceptual site plan with the five conditions outlined in my memo. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Mr. Mahoney with Barrett's is also here if you have any questions of him.
Thank you.
Ms. Murphy, thank you for your presentation. I did have several questions related to this textual amendment. How many places other in, other else in the zoning ordinance and the comp plan has an outdoor event space designation?
This is the first time we have outdoor event space. We thought it was important for the downtown area, especially with the closeness of residential properties, to regulate this space, and that's why we recommended the definition and the request for a special use permit.
Now, I know this is private ownership, but let's take this through a hypothetical route. If there was a public space designation somewhere else in downtown, and they wanted to set up an event space like this, a stage, that would still require a special use permit within that public space designation, correct? Or am I wrong?
The B1 district, in which I've got the map here that shows you, yes, we would require a special use permit for a permanent outdoor event space. We do have some occasions where someone would have maybe a one-day event or a two-day event that wouldn't qualify for this. The difference between this and those types of uses is this is a permanent being handled from, like the applicant is saying, from potentially March through October, so there's the difference in that. If it's a temporary, less than three days, you wouldn't need this. If it's something that's permanent and going to be there and used just, just to, well, say, year-round, then this definition would apply.
And probably that might be the dispositive fact that, you know, might throw out my whole analysis, but my whole thinking in this is, why not, we already approved a private plaza use last city council, last month's city council meeting. Why not just use that, amend that textual amendment to include the outdoor event space rather than do a redundant one in of itself to include in the B1 designation?
We thought we would do this as part of a restaurant-type use, because those are typically the type of events that would have outdoor seating. When this came through, we didn't know that the private plaza definition, what the outcome of that was. We thought that this was an appropriate use downtown for restaurants, and with the special use permit requirements, we could put limitations on them as to the time it ends and other limitations depending on the location of the, of the event or the proposal.
And I think, I think that's, just to jump in, I think that's the key to this, is in a lot of place, a lot of communities, a use like this would be considered accessory to the restaurant and not require a special use permit, but of course, being downtown in the city of Williamsburg, conditions are different, and the emphasis is placed on other things, particularly noise and aesthetics. Having a special use permit process gives us an opportunity to weigh in on that.
Yeah, I think Planning Commission had missed an opportunity to ask that question, why, you know, the private plaza definition when it was being proposed, and perhaps the outdoor event space could have been combined in some sort of fashion, or maybe there is a compelling reason to keep it separate. I don't see the compelling reason, but that's not a strong enough reason to not vote for this. I just wanted to highlight that.
Well, Mr. Zhang, if I could interrupt.
Yes, ma'am.
There's also a difference between private property and publicly-owned property. Publicly-owned property downtown is either owned by the college or by the city of Williamsburg. This is not the process for that.
I understand. Until with the private plaza, with private ownership, I was trying to illustrate the example of it's the same functionality except for the public space. I guess that's our current practice, and now being highlighted in the private side. Just one last question. In terms of 9:30, how did Planning Commission come to that number?
Well, the Planning Commission, that was a staff recommendation. The applicant wanted to end the events at nine o'clock. That's, that's what he put in his application. So when we discussed it in site plan review, we looked at it and said, let's give them a little leeway, because if they have a really good person or event that maybe wants to do an extra encore or something, it gave a little leeway that, 30 minutes that they could extend it from the proposed nine o'clock that they asked for until 9:30. So I did it to give them a little flexibility.
So I'm assuming, from a practicality standpoint, if there was another restaurant business in the downtown B1 that applies for this in the future, similar to what Barrett's, the applicant is, that they would also end at 9:00 p.m.? Or would it all have to change? Or could it be kind of all different for each one?
Well, no. Each, each request is looked at on its own merit as part of the special use permit, so we would take into account what that application is and what the event is, and then make a recommendation to Planning Commission and city council based on that. But the applicant requested nine o'clock, and I thought that was a little tight. This gave them a little leeway and gave them some, some flexibility.
I think until we see the next applicant, I think, you know, city staff should consider how they want to regulate the times and all that.
Certainly.
All right. Thank you.
It's all right.
Ms. Ramsey.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. It sounds like the planning department has thought through this process and the time and the location, particular to Barrett's and, and the definition. I do have one, one question. Was there any comments or discussion on what will happen during inclement weather? Will there...
No. They don't propose any stage cover at the present or anything like that, so I'm assuming if the, if the weather's bad, the event doesn't take place.
Just cancel.
The applicant's here and can probably address that more in more detail than me.
Mr. Maslin, any questions for staff?
So the applicant is a tenant, correct?
That's correct.
And how does the noise ordinance factor into this, or does it not?
Well, the noise ordinance comes into effect, I believe, after 11 o'clock, so...
So it's not applicable. The, why, so we heard that the applicant was suggesting 9:00 p.m. Who was suggesting limiting it to two performers?
The applicant, as part of his application, said there'd be no more than two performers, and I think part of that is the size of the stage, limits the number of people who can be on the stage.
I have some questions for the applicant when that's appropriate.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, I'm sorry. We'll open the public hearing, and then after that, we'll bring up the applicant. That's okay with everybody?
And if I can clarify that you do both, both...
Yeah, I was gonna say. So we're gonna open the public hearing on PCR number 19-016 and 19-017. So if there's anybody who would like to come forward to speak to these two items, please come forward. Why group today? Okay. So we'll close the public hearing and come back to council. If, Mr. Mahoney, if you don't mind coming up to the podium and building a couple of questions here from Mr. Maslin.
Hello, Brian Mahoney.
Yeah.
Yep. No, thanks for the presenting to us. So we know that Precarious Beer has a curfew at 9:00 p.m. for anyone under 21, correct? So I've been talking to several people, including some students, about how can we get, you know, activities in your area so that when families come with children under 21, there's something for them to do, and the family doesn't have to leave as a whole from Precarious Beer? Or that we've got, since most of the college students are under 21, we've got something that can keep them there beyond nine o'clock? Would you be, would you be able to look into maybe allowing non-amplified or requesting non-amplified music after nine o'clock?
Yes.
It's, it's not gonna be heard very much.
Yeah, we could. We don't have the demand for it much later in the evening, but we certainly, we would be happy to do it. It gets a little embarrassing at 9:30 when there's no one in the audience and the musician is still playing. Obviously, that depends on the time of year and the weather and many factors, but, so we don't...
Maybe we can work on a booking agent that could prove that. What about other activities that you have there also that would be applicable for those under 21? Are you having games there?
Yeah, I mean, we have the cornhole boards out front that sit there, and we have, again, in the summertime, we had Connect Four sitting out for the kids and Jenga, but got some use, but this time of year, not much as it gets cooler and the audience changes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Mahoney? Thank you, sir. I appreciate you coming up.
All right. Thank you for your time.
We'll come back to council for their comments and...
Yeah, I think, I'd support this application. I think maybe the textual amendment could have been an oversight or a redundant land use perspective from, from a county, from a city planning and zoning ordinance standpoint. No bearing legally, but it's just kind of, you know, if there's one definition we could have considered, and again, this is just to emphasize, we had considered the private plaza definition. This applies to all downtown B1 district, not just to the former, you know, formerly withdrawn application of Goodwood Square. So we could have really taken the opportunity to hone in on some of the aspects of that, and that's something we want to encourage. So given that, the idea, the intent of this outdoor event space, you know, I, I support it. I think it will add a lot of vibrancy to the downtown area.
Thank you.
And I do support the, this additional opportunity to bring people downtown and just give a, provide another entertainment option to, to the, to accessorize what's already there. So I'm in full support.
Very soon.
I concur with both colleagues.
Thank, well, as do I, and I think, you know, this effort to, you know, to help an existing business and one that's been in town for many years, to kind of evolve their business into something even better, I think is a great opportunity for the city and all of its residents and visitors, so I support it. So we're gonna vote on these individually, though, or would you like them together?
We can vote on them together.
Okay.
So I move to approve proposed ordinance 19-19 to define an outdoor event space and to allow an outdoor event space with a special use permit in the downtown business district B1 as recommended by Planning Commission.
So if I may, I think it's 19-016.
19-016, sorry.
Yep. And the second application, PCR number 19-017, so we're gonna do them both together.
So I move to approve proposed ordinance 19-016 and 19-017.
Fair enough. Good.
Second.
Mr. Maslin.
Mr. Maslin?
Do I need to say aye twice, or just once?
Just once.
Just once is good. Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Okay, and just for continuity, what I'd, we'd like to do is move item number H forward as the mayor has a conflict there. So this is consideration approval of a proposed ordinance number 19-21 authorizing vacation of portion of a water line easement on the property of CHPP LLC in York County, Virginia, and the acceptance of a new water line easement to be conveyed to the city by CHPP LLC on the property in York County, Virginia. Ms. Shelton?
And I think Mr. Small is gonna put a PowerPoint up. CHPP LLC is the developer of Powell Plantation Subdivision, which is proposed in York County. They are asking the city to vacate its current easement, which runs through the center of the subdivision, and move those easements to the roadways of the subdivision. If Erin can find the PowerPoint slide.
I apologize, you caught you guys off guard there.
So before council is an ordinance to approve that, that vacation of the existing easement, the developer will build water lines in exchange for that and grant easements where it's necessary on private property.
It's not there.
It's PCR 019. You passed it several times.
I hear your savior coming out of the back.
I'll get there. 019. It's not it. It's not there.
All right, well, so we are having problems with the PowerPoint. Nevertheless, the deed of easement and partial vacation was included in the agenda materials. The Public Works Department recommends approval. The property transfer is scheduled to happen within the next several days, and so the staff would not sign the deed of vacation until that property transfer occurs.
Any questions for Ms. Shelton before we go to the public hearing?
No questions.
Question, so is this just exchanging like for like?
Yes.
So there's, there's no need to value the easement?
That's right.
Thank you.
With that, I'll open the public hearing if anybody would like to come forward. Someone, no. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing and come back to council.
Hi, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the special use permit as recommended by the planning commission.
Second.
Could you amend that to approve proposed ordinance 19-21?
I read the wrong one. I apologize. What Ms. Shelton said, I made that motion.
Okay, let's, let's.
All right, I move, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve PCR dash 19-019.
No. I moved at city council.
19-21, I'm sorry.
Ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
The mayor's gladly taking the gavel from me.
This brings us to an out-of-order next public hearing, PCR 19-018, request of William and Mary Real Estate Foundation for a special use permit to operate a medical office and traditional office space greater than 10,000 feet at 332 North Henry Street. Ms. Murphy?
Mayor Freiling and members of city council, William and Mary Real Estate Foundation is requesting a special use permit to operate a medical office and traditional office space greater than 10,000 square feet in the 23,750-square-foot building located at 332 North Henry Street. I included in your packet the applicant's statement. They note in their application that the request is specifically addresses the students' community's need for additional student health facilities in close proximity to campus and the university's need for additional office space near campus. They stated that despite the opening of the wellness center on campus, there are, there are times when health-related needs of the campus community exceed the capacities of the existing wellness center and sports medicine facilities. This limits the timeliness of addressing needs for the campus community. This facility is within easy walk-in distance for students and staff, as noted in their application. I included in your packet the comp plan and current zoning regulations. Since the building is existing, no exterior changes are proposed and no ARB approval is necessary. As noted in my memo, in 2005, a special use permit was issued for the 23,750-square-foot Health Evaluation Center at this location, conditioned upon the Lawson House being relocated to 411 Scotland Street. A site plan was approved and permits were issued for the facility, which was completed in 2009. The applicant notes that 24 deeded parking spaces are located on the property, which should be sufficient for the proposed use and will serve staff and visitors. The property is located in the downtown parking district, where no additional parking spaces are required for the use. The applicant anticipates many of the students will be pedestrian in nature due to the proximity to campus. The proposed use is in harmony with the adopted comp plan and the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. It is in harmony with the character of adjacent properties and will not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of any feature determined to be of significant ecological, scenic, or historic importance. The existing building is cited so that it will not hinder or discourage appropriate development or use of adjacent properties. Planning Commission held a public hearing at the September meeting where the applicant and two individuals spoke in favor of their request. Planning Commission recommended the city council approval of a special use permit for the William and Mary Real Estate Foundation to operate a medical office and traditional office space in the building at 332 North Henry Street. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. Murphy?
No, sir. No questions.
So in this case, is William and Mary Real Estate Foundation the tenant or the owner?
They're, they have, they have, they're going to buy the property.
So, and could you explain as, William and Mary Real Estate Foundation buying property as opposed to the college, what that means in terms of our real estate taxes?
It's taxable is the main difference if it's owned by the, the foundation and not the state of Virginia.
So that's an advantage to the city?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Just a nuance to that, if they lease it back to the college, then it becomes not taxable.
Just to be clear.
Or deed it over.
The purchase by the foundation doesn't necessarily always mean that the use will be taxable, because the use actually determines that. In this case, the foundation and the college are agreeing that this use will be taxable.
Drew, is there any instance where if the, possible if the real estate foundation deeded over to the college, which is a public entity? Is that possibility?
Yes.
So in that case, then it would not be subject to city guidelines or city zoning anymore, but that's not what's being contemplated here today?
Yeah.
I was just wondering. Thank you.
And the other advantage of the real estate foundation owning it as opposed to the college owning it from a city residents' perspective is that once the college owns it, the state owns it. And the likelihood of that piece of property coming back into the private sector is very limited, whereas if the real estate foundation owns it, they'll probably, a building like this, they'll probably want to keep for a significant period of time, but there's always that potential for them to divest it and return it to the private sector.
Right.
Any other questions for Ms. Murphy? With that, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody who'd like to address council, please come forward. The trend continues. I had no luck either. With that, we'll close the public hearing.
Yeah, I thought it was me. Another question for Sean when that's.
Sure. Comments?
I support this special use permit.
Well, and I think, you know, the, the building has sat vacant for quite some time, and, and it was, you know, to that, it was designed in a way to facilitate some health evaluation, and, and so to be able to continue the use, the intended use on this building for this purpose, I think, is good, and, you know, and if we can help one of our local, you know, economic drivers and valuable partnership in, in Williamsburg with the college, I think we ought to support it.
I support it as well as Vice Mayor Pons said, it's an appropriate use of the building, and it's also another reason for students to be in the downtown area and explore and see what else is offered there, get them off campus.
So the question.
Mr. Hughes, would you mind, please? And when he's done, I may have a question or two afterwards.
Oh, good. Good afternoon. Hi. So that's great, expanding the, the health care options for the students, both physical and mental health. Well, it'd also mean that the college can expand the, the hours so that they're not restricted to just weekdays?
So it's anticipated from the college side, I just want to be clear, I'm here representing the foundation, it's anticipated from the college side that they would be able to offer services on the weekends to students. Part of the, the reason for the college looking for the additional space is to help support the on-campus wellness center, where, where they have some different hours and, and abilities. This is designed to complement those, and so it's contemplated there may be weekend hours.
Thank you. And also, I think everybody agrees that one of the easiest ways to increase vibrancy is to activate our empty buildings, so if you could continue looking for empty buildings to occupy, that would be great.
Point me to them, I'll be happy to take a look.
I'm gonna add a caveat, as long as they're taxable.
Yes, sir.
Keep them taxable. The questions?
Yeah, Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Can you help me understand the, the part, portion of Ms. Murphy's presentation that suggested because this building is so close to campus, that the likely means of transportation of the students who would be accessing the medical facilities would be pedestrian, and yet the vast majority of college dorm space is on the absolute opposite side of campus? And when people are seeking medical attention, sometimes, oftentimes, their ability to walk very far can be limited. Can you tell us a little bit, will the college be providing, and I know you represent the foundation, but is there a transportation plan of any sort? How will that be handled?
So there's, there's, there's two things. So there's the, as things are now, it's anticipated that, based on what we see at our current wellness center on campus, it's equidistant from, from some of our spaces that we're talking about, as this building would be, and we have a lot of folks who are walking there, so we're basing it upon that. And, and the other part of it is, as you may know, we're undergoing a parking study at the campus, which may rearrange parking, and it may make walking a much more viable option in some cases, and along with that is, is the, the thought that we are looking at other modes of transportation as well, including ride shares and bicycles and, and banned shares possibly. None of those decisions have been made. It's, it's an ongoing process, but based on how the students access the wellness center now, based on the location of this building, we do feel that the majority of folks, it's not intended to be an emergency care center, it's, it's a place we're going to refer to from the campus wellness center. It's anticipated that a lot of folks will be walking there.
And do you have student parking adjacent to or in front of the Goody Tyler Center now?
We do not. We have metered parking, and I think there's eight metered spaces, there's some handicap spaces, and, and most of it's, I think all of it, the rest of it's faculty staff.
Because I also think about students who aren't living on campus, who are accessing this facility.
Sure. Sure, so we anticipate some folks will drive. Based on existing street parking, we may be able to have a couple of folks use the existing street parking in the surrounding area with the one and two-hour limits for appointment times. We expect to have some of those 24 spaces occupied by visitors as well.
Okay, that's my, any other questions for Mr. Hughes? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Maslin, did you want to make any comments?
Yeah, I support this. It's great to be able to expand the options for the students, especially mental health, where it may be advantageous to actually go off campus. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I concur with my colleagues. I think it's important that the student body at the college have access to the best and widest array of medical services that the college can provide because they're entrusted the care and welfare of these young people while they're here in our community, and I think we all want to do right by them. So do we have a motion?
I move to approve the special use permit as recommended by planning commission.
Second.
Ms. Burcham?
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
This takes us to PCR 19-019, request of the Williamsburg James City County School Board for a special use permit to expand the paved parking area associated with the central office at 117 A and B Ironbound Road. Ms. Murphy?
Mayor Freiling and members of council, as you just stated, this is a request by the schools for a special use permit to expand the paved parking area associated with the central office. The applicant is proposing two phases of construction for the parking. The first phase will include 15 parking spaces, outlined in red on the, on the overhead, and is proposed to be constructed immediately. The second phase will add 32 spaces, which is outlined in blue, and will be constructed when needed. I noted in my memo the comp plan and zoning for this request. This property, the staff has received a complaint from a citizen that the school waters the adjacent ball field and runs a garden hose over the multi-use path, which creates an unsafe condition for pedestrians and bicycles on the path. The property is adequately served by essential public services such as streets, drainage facilities, fire protection, and water and sewer. Planning Commission held a public hearing in September. Other than the applicant, no one spoke. Planning Commission recommended a city council approval of a special use permit to add up to 47 parking spaces in two phases, as shown on the conceptual site plan, conditioned upon no garden hoses or other materials or devices being placed on the multi-use path, which renders, renders the path unsafe by obstructing the flow on the path. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
No questions?
No questions.
No questions.
So one question. So the areas that they're converting to paved parking, is that pervious or impervious currently?
Currently, the red was overflow parking for the construction, so it was gravled, so they're looking to take the gravel up and pave that. The other portion is currently green with part of the multi-use path, it's hard to see it on this, you can see it sort of in the blue, the multi-use path will be relocated. So that will become from green with, and multi-use path to paved, and so the multi-use path will be relocated.
So we've got both areas becoming impervious, and how are they gonna handle the stormwater?
The existing system can handle the stormwater based on the, the calculations the city engineers looked at it and is okay with it.
Thank you.
Is there any stipulation or requirement that the multi-use path be relocated before the phase-two parking is?
That's the intent as part of that construction, yes. We can make that a condition if you would like to add that.
I think that would be helpful. Last thing I want is for folks having to traverse a parking lot as part of a multi-use path. At least that's my, I mean.
I think that's wise.
I agree.
Any other questions for Ms. Murphy? That will open the public hearing. Anybody who'd like to address council on this item? Please come forward. Anyone? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, come back to my colleagues.
Well, you know, so most, a lot of what we see is already being used as parking. Clearly, there's a need, and I think, you know, we've had a lot of talk about parking lately in the last couple of months. Having a, a nice solid surface parking area is important for pedestrian access, so I support it.
I support the application.
I support it as well.
I do also.
As do I. Could I hear a motion, and do we need to amend any, put a condition in that motion?
So I'll attempt to do that. So I move to approve the special use permit as recommended by planning commission with the amendment that the multi-use path be in place before the construction of the parking.
Second.
Ms. Burcham?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
I believe that concludes our public hearings for today. Just making sure, because we did go out of order, that takes us to reports, the first of which is the monthly financial statement. Anything you'd like to highlight, Mr. Trivett?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say that our CFO and our deputy CFO are both at the Virginia Government Financial Officials Conference in Richmond today, so they're not here, but I'm happy to answer any questions. The report was submitted to you. We are tracking a number of revenues that are a little lower than they would have been this time last year, but we do expect them to rebound in the coming months. The exception to that is meals and room tax, which is up a little bit, so that's exciting news.
Questions?
A question on the water and sewer. It just looks like revenue's tracking a little lower and expenses a little higher. It just looks like revenue's tracking a little lower and expenses a little higher. Any concern there?
The biggest reason that it's lower this year, and I'm looking through my notes that was provided by our CFO, is we had a sale of timber last year that was included in the revenue at this point in the year that we haven't done this year, and so that's the big difference.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Trivett. Monthly departmental operating reports, anything you'd like to highlight there?
The only thing I want to offer is that we are, I think I've told you a couple of months now, we have been working on a new system software that provides those monthly operating reports. One of the reasons that we switched was because it will allow us to provide you with much more accurate and current information on how we're progressing with GIOs. And in our effort to get that part of the system developed, we inadvertently published that piece of it before we were ready. So, when many of you were looking at the operating reports for this meeting, you may have seen information that looked incomplete or even was inaccurate, and that's because it was published while we were editing it, but it has not been made live yet. So, we've taken that off and gone back to just the regular operating report.
So, as a citizen, if I go on the city website, I'm not going to have access to that incorrect information?
You will not see it. However, the IT director wanted me to reiterate that when we are editing it, it has to be live. So, there is the potential that if you log on at the right moment and the right time, he's in there changing something, or a department head is changing wording, and you would see things that are not ready for primetime.
Duly noted. Thank you. Questions? City manager report?
I had a few questions.
Oh, you do? Okay, go ahead.
So, on the community character, should we note that we're not seeing a whole lot of short-term rental applications?
Yeah, I think it is important to note, we're not seeing that. So, this is an example of one of those things that is, was published but should not have been in advance. The graph shows you the short-term rental applications that we have received to date, right? So, what it shows is that one was submitted. We do have one in the city right now operating, I believe that's right, Director Murphy, and then there have not been any applications since then. We are currently working on two that are not permitted and going through the process of code enforcement on those.
And then, still under community character, the rental ratio for the city, what are we measuring there?
I think that, Mr. Maslin, that's another example of something that has not been updated and published yet as part of the GIOs, and so I don't have that answer for you today.
Yeah. And then, a question on economic development. So, it's, so it says, what success looks like 36 or more businesses recruited to locate in the city? Is that an accurate goal?
Again, this was taken from the section of the published data that should have been published, and so what we're working on is ways to show you our GIO progress, along with what our goals would be set internally, but we've not updated any of this yet. This is still in a shell form.
So, you may come up with a different number?
Yes, that's possible.
But the category would still be a legitimate category?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay. City manager report?
There's none this month.
Okay. City attorney report?
Nothing.
This takes us to unfinished business, the first item of which is the update on the Workforce Affordable Housing Workgroup GIO. Mr. Trivett?
Yes. Excuse me. Goal five of the GIOs included an item on the formation of a workforce housing workgroup to look at workforce housing needs inside the city and come up with strategies and recommendations that could be brought forward to the city council. And we are ready now to bring to you the update on that and get your feedback. This will be another city manager's workgroup, so it's not something that's formed by the city council, it's managed and operated by the city manager. In this case, I've asked a very capable Tyrone Franklin to head that up for us, and he has agreed to do that. So, I provided in your packet the outline, like we did for Neighborhood Balance, in terms of what the structure of that committee will be, including the workgroup members. A substantial difference is that we will be asking for two appointees from the city council, and we'll ask the mayor to recommend those to us, to serve alongside a member of the Planning Commission, a representative of William &amp; Mary, a Hampton Roads Planning District Commission member, the Williamsburg Association of Realtors, the Williamsburg Health Foundation, a banking institution representation, a James City County Neighborhood Development Administrator, so James City County recently went through a similar process to this. By having them participate in our group, we're able to share that information so that we don't have to recover that ground. And then, lastly, the Peninsula Agency on Aging. As you all look at this and consider it over the next month or so, if there is additional members you'd like to see, please let us know. We'll do our best to contact those folks. If you're okay with this list, we will begin sending out invitations to get them signed up and ready to serve. Of course, there's a whole host of city staff that will be providing assistance to the group, and then on the memo, there's a background piece that shows you some key topics we're going to be covering as we dive into this topic, which of course is very complex. And then, the last item is meetings and topics to be covered. So, we've already set meeting dates for this committee. What we found in Neighborhood Balance, it's best to send that out as early as possible so that potential members can schedule that time, and as well as the topic. So, again, if there are topics that you think we have missed, let us know, we'll do our best to add those.
Questions for Mr. Trivett?
Yeah, I had several, and thank you, Drew, for your foresight in putting this together. This has been one of the big highlights from the last state of the mayor, state of the cities addressed, and I think with all communities across the country pursuing affordable housing, you know, Williamsburg is no exception with that. In terms, I know this is a city manager's workgroup, so it's not subject to public hearings or public notice, correct? Is there any way, as we're going through the different sessions, whether it's the materials or some sort of minutes of discussions that could be put out for public consumption on our website? I don't know what your thoughts were on that, whether you wanted to keep the discussions to just the group and then present a finalized recommendation on the end of it, but that's just something for, you know, other members of this council and for you to consider. My one other suggestion is, I think the workgroup members look great. There are also a number of advocates in the community, those from the nonprofit church side. I know we have one nonprofit Peninsula Agency on Aging, but 3E Restoration has been a big advocate for affordable housing. You know, he's one of the church pastors here locally that has this network of churches. I think they're involved with COFAM and others. And perhaps maybe, I know there's William &amp; Mary to include, whether it's a public policy professor, we had Sarah Stafford, who wrote the city's housing analysis, perhaps someone from the law school, if we're going to consider any recommendations with regard to land use as well. But I think this is a great direction, I think this is rightly needed, and I'm glad we're putting this finally into action. So, thank you, Mr. City Manager, for that.
May I just chime in on one thing you mentioned there at the beginning about city manager working group, and so it's not a public meeting? Something I'd ask Mr. Trivett to consider with Neighborhood Balance, which could also be applied here, is that if the group receives a presentation that he feels would be particularly helpful for the entire community and council to also hear, that he would look at possibly scheduling a similar presentation for a city council work session-
Perfect.
-to help get some of that word out.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Well, too, thank you for bringing up the Neighborhood Balance. You know, so we have these two new working groups that could have some overlap, and so I would hope that staff and the members of these two different working groups can have that communication where if there is somebody coming in presenting, maybe both groups could participate, so it just eliminates some of the redundancy. But I think this is a great opportunity, it's very timely, given James City County's efforts in their workforce housing, and so I think delving into the issue to, just to look at, you know, what have we done to date for, to support workforce housing? You know, what is the inventory? You know, where, what availability do we have to do anything new? I think these are some of the things that need to be addressed, and so I look forward to that.
I echo my colleagues and agree that this is a timely workgroup to put together. I think it's also interesting that there are a lot of different aspects of housing now. You've got cohousing and tiny housing and micro apartments and all different kinds of things that all communities are looking at to try and solve the issue of workforce housing. So, I look forward to hearing the recommendations.
Mr. Maslin?
A couple of things. So, I think we talked about before, to be able to hit the ground running, if the group could sort of have a synopsis of what's going on, especially with our local jurisdictions and where they are, and what can be learned from those. And then, also making sure that we've got people represented who actually can make it happen. So, do we have a developer there? Do we have an investor there? So that, you know, maybe we have a better chance of seeing something, you know, an outcome, rather than just having a policy there.
One thing we might want to be careful there, though, is if we have a developer or an investor, it should really be someone who has little chance of benefiting from the outcome of the recommendations of the group, so if you could keep that in mind. Are you, you have other questions?
Well, I think you want somebody who's going to buy into the program, because if we can't get any developers or investors to buy into the program, and maybe it's more of a messaging, you get to a certain point and you test it with them, even if they're not coming to every meeting.
I'm pleased that we get the participation and cooperation from other entities that don't have the same stake in this that we do. In this case, if somebody from the Health Foundation, of course, it's part of their mission, but it takes time away from their regular job. Somebody from the Peninsula Agency on Aging, a banking institution, William &amp; Mary, PDC, all those people are giving of their time to help this community, but I'm particularly pleased that the James City County Neighborhood Development Administrator is willing to pitch in.
We don't know yet. We've not sent the invitations.
Just, I've accepted them there perhaps.
I will tell them the mayor insists.
So, and Mr. Franklin, of course, we hugely in debt to you for your efforts in this regard.
Well, thank you, and I just wanted to let you know that I did talk to Mr. Von Pollitt, who is the administrator of housing in James City County, and he did indicate that he had a willingness to help us in our process.
I think that's a great message for some folks who feel like our jurisdictions do not work together, do not work well together, and this is one of a great many examples of where there's terrific cooperation. So, you have enough to go on?
I think so. The only thing I would add is just to comment on the city manager's working group instead of a public process-driven meeting. There's really no magic to why we decide to do it this way versus another way, other than if you look at the list of GIOs, there's a lot of research work that has to be done. And when we put together a workgroup like this, it's very easy to underestimate the amount of work involved in having those meetings, organizing the agendas, and walking the group through a decision-making process. It takes a tremendous amount of time, and when you apply that requirement on top of working professionals who have other responsibilities and duties to the city, it can get very complicated. And so, adding the layer of advertising public meetings, staffing it with someone who's like a clerk that can take minutes and publish those minutes, it just is burdensome to a point that I don't think that we need. I think the mayor's suggestion of bringing things of interest back to the city council through the work session environment is a great one, and we can definitely accomplish public awareness by doing that.
Perfect, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir. This takes us to new business. The first item is consideration and authorization for a ward of bid for the Monticello Avenue Multi-Use Trail. Mr. Small, a project we've all been eagerly anticipating.
I knew you'd bring that up.
How many years has it been?
I think we're on year two or three. Three, I think. Before you today is the consideration to award a construction contract for the Monticello Avenue Multi-Use Trail. This work involves installation of a 10-foot wide asphalt trail through the wooded area south of Monticello Avenue between Ironbound Road and the entrance to the William &amp; Mary School of Education at Trayburn Drive. The project will look very similar to what everybody's seen on the Virginia Capitol Trail between Jamestown and Richmond, but in our case, we're going to actually have a streetlights along the way for security, and it'll, this will be a very nice amenity. As Mr. Mayor mentioned, it's been a very long and lengthy design process. We find, staff, we finally received federal authorization to advertise, and staff advertised the project in accordance with the Virginia Procurement Regulations. We received eight bids for the project, which is a large amount for a lot of our projects. Howard Brothers Contractor of Providence Forge provided the lowest responsive bid at $1,185,643.90 and met all the conditions required of the bid. City staff is familiar with Howard Brothers, who previously performed work with the city on Merrimack Trail, and we were satisfied with their work product and had no contractual issues. The recommended bid, as well as other costs on the project, have come in higher than anticipated with the original budget. However, we do recommend that the overage be funded by a transfer from the Monticello Avenue Improvements PPTA project, which has excess available funds in the CIP. Because a million dollars of the project budget is allocated from federal funds, VDOT must review the bid proposal and provide authorization to award to ensure it complies with all federal procurement requirements. The process can take some time, and we have not yet received it, we expect to receive it any day now. So, but rather than delay the start of the construction, we recommend the council award the Monticello Avenue Multi-Use Trail Construction Contract to Howard Brothers Contractor, Inc. in the amount of $1,185,643.90 contingent upon VDOT final bid review and authorization to award. This project is expected to begin in November and be completed towards the end of the summer of 2020, at about the same time as the adjacent PPTA roadway project. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Help me understand better, you still have to wait for VDOT to approve, grant, and-
Still waiting for the final blessing.
Right. But you anticipate that'll come in before the November start date on this, or?
That's, as soon as we get the authorization from VDOT, we will then work with the contractor to issue the notice to proceed and get started, so that we can start construction as soon as possible.
Because we can't start until we get-
I can't start until they give us authorization to do that. Either that or we're chanced losing out on the million dollars of federal funds.
That's all the questions I had.
Thanks for your presentation.
I have no questions either. Thank you.
Two questions. So, what would the effect be on traffic during this project?
Most of the traffic, it will be some minor lane closures, or at least shoulder closures, we expect. However, most of the work will be occurring off of the road in the wooded area. So, really, during the first phase, when some of the clearing occurs, there could be some minor, you know, holdups to traffic, but other than that, we don't expect too much.
And then-
Biggest change to the traffic pattern will be the turn lane that currently goes into the School of Education. That will actually be removed and become part of the trail through that area, because they no longer, it's not a, it's not a necessary use for that turn lane since the hospital's been gone.
The other question is, any environmental issues that would impact schedule in terms, especially land disturbance?
Unexpected. We've been, we've, that's part of what takes this whole process, through the design process so long, is making sure we have all the environmental clearances and such.
I'm thinking about the long yard bath, that's more of a concern in the summer, right? Okay, thank you.
Special little flowers along the way. Mr. Small, could you just say a word about why it's taken as long as it has to get to this point?
Well, the big, the big key word is the federal funds. It does, there is a process for these transportation alternative set-aside funds that you have to go through. It includes the environmental clearances. Every design review has to get forwarded up to VDOT in the central office, and that can take some time for them to come back. And then, when it comes time to actually go to advertisement and all the checkboxes have been filled out, then it actually has to go up all the way to FHWA for authorization.
And I just, it should be obvious-
We also had a long, drawn-out process for the actual location of the project. Because it does go into College Woods, there's some special considerations that had to be done with the property.
And it should be obvious to all that you can't build a trail or path along a wooded area without taking a number of trees down.
That is correct.
So, we're going to see a pretty significant clearing on that one side of Monticello.
That is correct. It's going to be a significant change.
But the safety and accessibility improvements are, in my mind, are well worth that. Motion?
I move that council authorize the city manager to award the bid and execute a contract with Howard Brothers Contractor, Inc. for $1,185,643.90 contingent on VDOT final review of the bid proposal and authorization to award. I further move that council authorize the city manager to transfer necessary funds to fully fund the project from excess funds on the Monticello Avenue Improvements PPTA project.
Second.
Ms. Burcham?
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Our next item of new business is consideration and adoption of Resolution 19-16, accepting state of good repair paving funds from VDOT for fiscal year 20. Mr. Small?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This next project is a, this is some funding that we had applied for at VDOT under the State of Good Repair Program, which is used for primary roads throughout the city. It's also coupled with the, what was known then as the primary extension paving projects. And we've actually paved about four or five roads in the city, including Lafayette Street, Page Street, Bypass Road, Richmond Road, with those coupled funds of state of good repair and primary extension. We applied last year for paving of Route 143 from the city line up by Queens Creek, at the Queens Creek Bridge, south to the intersection with Merrimack Trail. And then that segment also runs down to where we have the embankment just south of Surrey Drive. Based on the condition rating of the pavement, we were awarded, and the traffic rating, volume, we were awarded $226,440 to repave that street. And so what we ask now is a resolution to ask the city manager to enter into agreements to accept those funds and award that, or go towards construction of that project.
Questions from council?
So clearly, this is not the cost of repaving. These are just the grants that are available. Beyond that, there's-
That's the funding available for paving of this street, this particular road.
We have not taken it out to bid, and we don't know the full cost.
No. That is the estimated funds available. And we will be putting together the bid package with our annual resurfacing contract.
Right.
And that'll go out to bid in the wintertime, and we'll be paving in the spring.
So the difference between the actual cost and these grants will be funds from the city that we'll have budgeted in our CIP?
Right. We really do expect it to come in below this, because once, we don't get any more than what they've given us.
I see. Well, thank you.
No questions?
Mr. Small, if, if the funds are given to us for this project, and if we, if the bids don't come up to that, do we then accept less, or do we get to keep that money for other projects?
We have to accept less. All money that's unspent goes back into the State of Good Repair Project Funds Program for other projects that are eligible.
I knew something about that sounded too good.
I, it's, you know, this is what they've allocated for us, but we can only spend what we can spend.
Your motion?
I move that city council approve Resolution 19-16, accepting FY '20 VDOT State of Good Repair Program Funds.
Ms. Burcham? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Mr. Pons seconded.
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Next item is consideration and approval of proposed ordinance 19-20 to amend the provisions of the Virginia statewide fire prevention code regarding insurance and application deadline for fireworks permit.
So unlike the building code, we are allowed to amend provisions of the fire code for local situations. And one of those things that we do is require a permit for certain fireworks. As part of that permitting process, we require the applicant to provide the city with proof of insurance. And several years ago, there were some court cases. The way that used to happen was by adding some language to a certificate of insurance, saying that the city was named as an additional insured, and would receive notice if the policy was modified or canceled. But that turned out, at that point, not to be legally sufficient. And so for several years now, we have required the policy owner to provide us with endorsements of the policy. And that has been the contractual provision in the city for a while. We had an application, and we're looking at this last month, and determined that we needed to provide some clarification regarding that requirement for endorsements and the effect of policy termination or modification for the city to receive the notice. And also, the fire marshal asked that we, instead of providing for permits having to be filed 15 days in advance, we'd like to have 30 days in advance. And in part, that's because it takes a while to get those endorsements from the insurance company. And so it's been taking us a while to track those down, and 15 days is just not long enough. So this ordinance adds those clarifications to the fire code amendments in the city code and extends the permit application period from 15 days to 30 days.
Questions? Straightforward? Do I hear a motion?
I move that city council adopt proposed ordinance 19-20.
Second.
Ms. Burcham?
Mr. Maslin?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Next item on our agenda is consideration and direction concerning the 2020 legislative agenda draft. I think we saw a little hints of that earlier.
I was, was really hoping that Mr. Small was going to give this presentation. So every year, the city does a legislative agenda that we carry to Richmond that advocates for our positions on particular topics of interest. Every year, it changes just a little bit. Some years, we have very specific issues that are critical and its importance to the city. And other years like this one, we have the opportunity to sort of tackle other issues that are maybe not as, as pressing. Every year, we go through the similar process of putting this agenda together. We can sort with our community partners and support organizations to review their existing legislative agendas, many of whom produce their own. And we extract from that anything that we think has similar relevance to the city. At this point, though, it's difficult to do that, because we're very early in the development of those. So many of these agencies that are listed here have not published a formal agenda yet, or are working through the exact same process that we are this month in having their councils or their board of supervisors adopt those agendas. But we do our best to get that information as early as we can. The organization of what we're presenting to you today is the same as in past years. We've got an intent statement, the priority issues are listed, the other issues of focus, and then the partner agency issues that are also covered. So the first priority issue is one that is carryover from last year. It's community communication sales and use tax. If you remember from last year, we talked about the fact that the state uses sort of an antiquated system of assessing a communication sales and use tax, where they have a artificially set percentage of 5% that doesn't match the statewide sales tax in many cases. And so most localities in the region, even in the state, are advocating that the state, when they look at communication sales and use tax, consider increasing that, as well as expanding its application to include things like calling cards and digital streaming services. The reason for this is because if you look at revenues from the localities across the state that benefit from the communication sales and use tax, you will find that that revenue has steadily decreased year after year after year, as those streaming services and calling cards, alternatives to landline phones, become more and more popular. And the tax code is not kept up to date.
So technology's outpacing the code?
That's exactly right. So then next is a new item for the agenda this year, but it's something that we're no stranger to. We've talked about it numerous times, and that's the widening of I-64, particularly the segment of I-64 between Williamsburg and Richmond that is, I'm just going to say, no man's land, because it's not in a transportation planning organization's footprint. It's not covered by PDC. So the only source of funding is directly from the Commonwealth Transportation Board, which is fine, because they seem very willing to do that expenditure. It's just a matter of finding the funds to complete that work. So while it is a relatively small section of road, I believe it's 24, 26 miles in length, it's critical, because it's sort of the hole in the doughnut, as, as the case might be, if the doughnut were a straight line. So it's important that we try to find this funding to get that done.
Where did you get the image of the 1967 vintage car on 64?
The interwebs, a valuable source of information. But I did find that interesting. If you remember, the reason I put that in there, I'm glad you noticed that, Mayor, is because last year, I had an image of when they first built the Hinterroaches Bridge Tunnel, because we were advocating for the funds to complete that work as well. And then this is the new issue for this year. The mayor had asked us to consider what the city might do in terms of single-use plastics. And so I started looking around at what other localities had done across the state, as well as what was happening in the General Assembly. And as you all know, we're a Dillon Rule state, which simply means that the city can't take on issues or do things that we're not empowered to do directly by the state statute. In this case, with single-use plastics, we have very little control locally over what we can and cannot do. Over the last few years, delegates and senators have brought pieces of legislation to the General Assembly that would impose a tax on single-use plastics, particularly plastic bags. The way that that would be applied would be that if you were in the checkout line and you opt for plastic, a small fee would be added to your overall bill. But none of those pieces of legislation have successfully made it through the assembly. So at this point, we have very little that we can do locally without infringing upon that Dillon Rule, Dillon Rule provision. But I did think it was important that we start to put this on our agenda as a piece of advocacy, because we do want to have local control. And what's important about this is, I chose, in looking at a lot of the legislative packages from other localities, particularly in the region, they have chosen a vehicle to advocate for, whether it's a tax, or a ban, or some other recycling program. And rather than put that forward to you today, I'm simply saying that we're advocating for local control over the issue. And if the General Assembly decides on one vehicle or another, okay. But absent that, simply allow the localities to decide what's best for them. The next topic is the local government revenues. As you know, the General Assembly has, time and time again, imposed restrictions on the local government's authority to collect revenue, and in return for that, offered us some form of compensation, a statewide solution to that revenue collection. The communication sales and use tax is a good example of that. Quote-unquote 599 funds for the police department's operation is another good example. And over time, those sort of conciliatory measures are not adjusted to keep up with revenue generations. And so what we see is, in the localities, those streams dwindle. And that's certainly been the case in the city. And so every year, we advocate for the General Assembly to consider increasing those funds, so that we are at least on par with the year in which they were enacted. Next on the agenda are the other issues of focus. These cover the topics of good governance, transportation, state and local partnerships, and a host of others. And these are items that are taken from legislative packages from across the state. Obviously, some are listed here. William &amp; Mary produces their own list to us. I send them an email and ask what they would like to be included. They do an internal polling and send me some things. That's reflected in the memo that I provided you, as far as what their funding priorities are going into the legislative session. Interstate 64, of course, continues to be on there as a vital transportation artery for us. And then redistricting is a good example of good governance. And then we talk about partner agency support. There's always a statement in our legislative agenda that reflects the city's partnership with these agencies, the Virginia Municipal League, Virginia First Cities, the HR PDC, the HRTPO. All produce their own legislative packages. We are given the opportunity to vote on those packages and, as such, support them. So the timeline is the same as it has been in years past. We start this process in September. We produce a draft for you in October that's considered at, of course, this meeting. In November, we ask that you adopt that draft. So you've got 30 days to sort of think this over and provide feedback to me. If there are items included in the list that you don't think should be there, if there are things that we've missed that are important and we need to add, let us know between now and the November meeting. In December, we try to hold our legislative event. That's a process where we sit down with our local legislators and go over our agenda, as well as get their forecast for how the General Assembly session might go this year, and hear from them what they think the big topics might be, particularly as it relates to the city. The session begins this year in January, of course, and it is the long session, because it's an even-numbered year, so it'll last 60 days. The pre-filing of agenda, of legislation began in November. So there's already some bills that are floating out there with legislative services being put into final form. But as, of course, we get closer to that deadline in January for pre-filing, we'll have a much better picture of the pieces of legislation that the city may want to take a stance on, in addition to what we've included in our legislative package. With that, I'll take any questions.
I had a couple of questions. Thank you, Drew.
No, I just had some comments, but no questions.
Please go ahead, sir.
So, you know, what I like about kind of our strategy when we put together our legislative agenda is that we try to keep it succinct. And we've all seen legislative agendas that have been multiple pages and, you know, in the weeds, so to speak, on, on a lot of issues. And I think you get lost. You know, when you, when you present that to the legislators, you know, they, they don't know where to start, and there's nothing seeming a priority. And I think what we've done here is identified some things that are, that are really a priority for us. And so I think that's the best way to go about it. And then my last pitch to the community is that if there are things here that, that, or there isn't something here that they want to see, please contact us and let us know, and so we can have that conversation moving forward. And maybe we can add them to our legislative agenda.
Sorry to cut you off. So this past weekend, I, I was at Roanoke. I'm the vice chair for VML's Legislative Committee, where we considered and adopted and recommended to the business meeting of all the elected officials that were present to formally adopt our legislative package to the General Assembly. As you had mentioned, we support generally what VML's legislative package is. One of the issues that happened to discuss was local control generally, not just to include single-use plastics, but ultimately, I believe that, given there were, given some of the conversations that were happening at the committee level, they decided to strike it out of its legislative priorities and put it as a policy statement. But what I would advise, and I'm not sure exactly what went into it, I missed the second meeting for VML Legislative Committee meeting. I think generally, with local control, has come up as a theme throughout this past year, whether it's public safety, whether it's the ability for us to regulate, you know, what could be entered or not entered into municipal buildings. We saw that with the prior special session. So I would advocate, and I would think that it'd be a lot more effective if we did not narrow down just the single-use plastic bags, but maybe just local control generally. The General Assembly's going to change, but we have no idea how they're going to change it until November. So I think strategically, you know, going with the broader message of what, I think there are a lot of things that residents care about, whether it's plastic use, or taxing plastic use, or some sort of school safety measure. I think what we should do is be able to have a broader message. And once we understand how the General Assembly's going to change demographically, then we can hone in on what could realistically be done. Because the last thing I would want is to have a legislative package where legislator, whoever, wherever partisan control will be in the General Assembly, will look at that and just kind of go, you know, I'm not going to take this seriously. So I think it's important that we advocate, and we continue to advocate as council members, as individuals, for these individual issues. But I think in terms of the greater good for the collective Williamsburg, I think there's so many different policies that we all have priorities on, and they all relate back to local control. So I would just put it, I'll just make a plea in that front. But I agree, I think there are a lot of pressing issues that need to be addressed. And with VML generally, they're all included in the package.
I would just like to echo Vice Mayor Pons, that it's nice that our legislative agenda is succinct and has the bullet points in there. I think that's very important, as well as collaboration with our partner, partners, particularly the local James City County and York County.
Yeah, one question, one comment. The, what was our success rate last year, do you think, in terms of percentage?
You know, we really didn't have a particular issue that we were advocating for last year. So I would say that we weren't very successful, because a lot of the issues that we had were large issues that the General Assembly historically doesn't take action on. The priority issues that you saw there, really, the only new one, genuinely new one, is single-use plastics. All of the others have been carried over and have been on an agenda in this state for many, many years. But it doesn't mean that they're less important to us.
And then a comment on the single-use plastic. I think it's very important, picking up what Barbara said, is that however we get there, it's got to be the same for the two counties and Williamsburg, because otherwise, it'll change shopping habits.
Sure. I did notice that York's legislative agenda draft included single-use plastic language, and we didn't match exactly, but we're very close. I will tell you that, and this, this sort of goes to, I think, Mr. Zhang's point. In putting together a legislative agenda this year, it was interesting, because I attend the monthly Chief Administrative Officers' Meeting of every locality that participates in the PDC. And at this month's meeting, we talked about legislative agendas. And there was a genuine plea for us to work on a solution to this, every jurisdiction putting together their own agenda, and thus, sort of having a watered-down effect, sort of to the point of succinctness as well, of page after page of legislative agenda, and everyone sort of working toward their own end. And the question was, is there a way for us to all work collaboratively and be more effective? I don't know that the answer to that is yes, because obviously, the issues that are important to the city of Williamsburg are starkly different than the issues that are important in Norfolk or Virginia Beach in many ways. But it does sort of generate the question of, could we be more collaborative with our local partners for sure, like James City County and York County? To that end, I think that we've already started conversations on a joint legislative process that might work for a few of us. So I think that we can expect some change, maybe next year.
And if I may, Mr. Zhang, regarding the concept of local control, I think that would be wonderful. But it sounds like it's effectively changing Virginia from being a Dillon Rule state to not. And that is a very large hurdle for, I mean, I don't even know, is there, how would, how would that happen?
The law in Virginia would have to change. I mean, the state would have to say, we're a home rule state now, no longer a Dillon Rule state. That would be a big, a big project.
And I think that would be wonderful. But I think that would almost be such a- And I think that would be wonderful, but I think that would almost be such a big thing to strive for that it would be very easy on a whole host of fronts for legislators to say, no, we're not going to do that because of this. It has nothing to do with some of the issues that might be important to us. So if there's a way to look at maybe supporting that concept, and if anybody feels like the single-use plastics shouldn't be in here, then let's have that conversation. This is just a draft, and that's why we talk about it. But I worry a little bit about Home Rule versus Dillon becoming too big of a hilt to charge.
Yeah, and I think what I can do is, the VML agenda, of course, wasn't ready when we put together our package for the meeting.
Just got approved yesterday.
Right. So what I will do is I'll pull that language up and see what it says, and if there's a way to tweak that or include it in our agenda in a strong way and still focus on single-use plastics, if that's the wheel of the council, I think we'll try to do both.
Speaking, just one final point about Dillon Rule. Counties and cities are different.
Yes.
In terms of how they're structured by, so if we're doing a joint legislative process, I want, you know, I think it's important to make what's, you know, to draw out that distinction between counties and city powers. I think we have certain powers that are greater than what the county may do. So when we merge or do a joint adventure with them, I think it's important to draw out those distinctions, too.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Trivitt. This takes us to consideration and approval of ordinance 19-22, adding Section 11-96 to Article 4 of Chapter 11 of the Williamsburg City Code authorizing installation and operation of video monitoring systems on certain school buses operating on city streets. Mr. Trivitt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is an item that was brought to us in the last spring by the school district, and they were expressing a desire to try and do something to curb the number of violations of the school bus passing law that were occurring in the district. And what they wanted to explore was the option of partnering with a company that provides the service of installing video cameras to capture those violators and transfer that information directly to a true violation in terms of a citation being issued by the local police department. Lots of companies have come forward with that as a mode of operating, and I think the school district is considering several of them. As they went through their process of considering, and they learned that they needed pursuant to state statute, the local jurisdiction's authority to install cameras on the buses. And so since this is a joint school system, James City County actually drafted this language that's in the resolution and forwarded it on to our city attorney, who turned it into our resolution or our ordinance. And now we're being asked to approve it to allow them to move forward with their vendor selection process, which they couldn't do until this happened. If you have questions on the actual logistics and how this would operate, obviously, I'm not the person to answer those, but I think that John Lambusta from the Williamsburg-James City County School District is here. He's the Director of Transportation. He can come forward and answer those questions.
No questions, but I think we ought to support it. If we can offer these measures to help enforce the law in terms of passing school buses and by writing tickets and arresting those folks, maybe that will cease to happen or lessen. I'm sure there's a budget implication, but what's the value, you know, how do you value that? So I think it's a good idea to support it.
I support it.
I support it as well. I think it's somewhat appalling to think that people are passing school buses that are stopped and children on the road crossing in front and on the sides of the buses. So I am all in favor of this.
I've got some questions.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm John Lambusta, the Director of Transportation for WJCC Schools.
Thank you. So before advocating this, what measures have been taken with the local police departments in terms of an initiative on their part?
We have, since this spring, we've been reporting violations. We've also been giving them hotspots where most of these violations have occurred. Last year, for instance, we had 1,000, over 1,000 violations. This year so far, over 400.
Now, this program, is it correct that this program, the citation issued would be more like a parking ticket?
Well, what would happen is the video would be captured along with still photos. That information would be transferred to the police department. So a warrant officer to law would look at it, would validate it, or would decline it. We'd go back to the company. The company would go ahead and put together a, basically, a citation. They would send it to the individual who was involved. That individual could then look at that. They could either fight it or pay that off $250 fine.
So as a citation, it would not generate any points on the driver's license?
I don't believe so, sir.
Right. So what about, so I'm familiar with the photo enforcement for, you know, traffic lights and speeding, and there've been successes and failures and.
Right.
And I think the critical component, which you talked about, is actually reviewed by a police officer.
Yes.
So that the threshold is, if the police officer had been there, would the police officer have issued the citation?
And I'd also like to say, we've gotten great responses and great support from both James City County and Williamsburg, but obviously, they can't be there all the time. I mean, we've got people violating several times a day. We've had one stop where we had 14 cars pass us. It's crazy.
Now, the, and the citation is actually going to the car owner, correct? Not the driver necessarily?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So if the car owner wants to appeal, how does that happen in our process?
Well, they go ahead and they look at the citation. Basically, they go online, they can look at the video, they can look at the still photos, they can go ahead and decline it, and I believe from there, they would have to go to, you know, the location to, I guess, the city and fight that ticket.
General District Court.
Oh, so go directly to the court. So when I've seen the successful programs for traffic light enforcement, it was important to get the court's buy-in for that. Do we have the court's buy-in on this process?
Yes, sir. I mean, the Virginia Code allows that. We've also got a couple of other municipalities. You've got Richmond right now. You've got also the folks down in Virginia Beach that are currently doing that, and they've had those programs now for well over a year.
But our local court, have we, has anybody talked to them about this?
We have not, sir.
It's in the Code of Virginia, so the court will enforce what's in the Code of Virginia.
So it might be good to give them a heads up just so they know what's coming, right? The, okay, no, that sounds good in terms of the way that you've laid out, but, and having said that, it doesn't preclude if we've got hotspots, we can have an officer there actually giving citations and arresting people.
We'll certainly continue our enforcement, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
I'm just stunned beyond belief that there could be that many people violating what is such a basic safety concern. I, it's hard to fathom. It's incredibly disappointing. Do, what about York County? Do they need to weigh in on this at all? I mean, do our school buses travel through York County at any point?
I'm sure that they probably do. I have not talked with anyone from York County about this because this is an authorization for our school system to use this, and it requires both the city and James City County to authorize our school system to have these cameras.
So it doesn't matter that the bus might be in York County when it happens?
Not, not insofar as the video system is authorized.
Okay, okay, that's helpful. Okay, do I?
But that could be a reason for appeal if the jurisdiction where it happened was not in the city or the county, James City County.
Well, you're enforcing a provision from the Code of Virginia, so this is across the state. It's illegal to pass a stop school bus with the sign and the arm out. This is simply evidence that our school system is now authorized to use to demonstrate the violation of the law.
And I think the Commonwealth's attorney will take up that case because they want to send a statement to the community that this is not okay, so.
But it would matter which court it's filed in.
Right, 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 okay.
And one, just one other comment. I took issue with some of the wording in the way I introduced this. I don't like the term that's "on certain school buses" because it's not that the school system is going to be picking and choosing certain school buses to put these cameras on. Is that correct?
That's right. And actually, the language in the ordinance and online has been changed from the printed agenda.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Do you hear a motion?
I move that City Council approve ordinance number 19-22 as drafted.
Ms. Bertram?
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Oh, this takes us to such an exciting moment on the agenda. Consideration and appointment of Sandy Felico as the City of Williamsburg Clerk of Counsel. Mr. Trivitt?
Yes, Mayor, as you know, our current clerk, Debbie Bertram, has taken a position downstairs in the Commission of Revenue's office and is stepping down as our clerk. Today will be our last meeting with the City Council. And so we are asking Sandy Felico, and she has agreed to serve as the new clerk for council moving forward. So we're glad to have her come back and reprise her role that she played as an interim clerk while we were hiring. So, thank you, Sandy.
This is where we stand up and clap.
Well, can we get two-factor authentication here? Ms. Felico, do you actually agree with this? That's helpful. And congratulations, Ms. Bertram.
Thank you.
Pollen says Ms. Felico. Sorry you have to. Comments?
No, but just real quick, Ms. Bertram's done a wonderful job for us, has been very helpful in doing all that she does, down to the simple task of helping us coordinate our calendars, and I'm very appreciative of those efforts. So thank you, and I wish you the best.
And I'm glad you're going to be sticking around, just downstairs and not upstairs, but you've been wonderful to work with, and we'll miss you over there.
Thank you. I would just like to reiterate those sentiments as well. It's always nice to see a friendly smiling face when we've been walking in the door, and nice to see, will still see, that smiling face.
I agree.
Mr. Maslin, if you'd like to lead us in a round of applause.
Oh, yes, let's go. Mayor, I'd move that City Council appoint Sandy Felico as the Clerk of Counsel.
Aye.
Ms. Bertram?
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
That concludes council's business for open session, and it brings us to the open forum. At this point, we invite any member of the audience to come forward who'd like to address council. Should you like to do so, we ask that you please give your name and address and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Seeing no one, I'll close the open forum. Oh, do we have somebody? Oh, please.
Just briefly, my name is Fred Ligon. I am lead pastor at Williamsburg Christian Church and founder and president of Three Restoration. Been here for nine years. And I want to just be on record thanking you for your leadership and willingness to explore workforce housing and affordable housing for our neighbors here. As I have had the opportunity to conduct four different ethnographic projects here due to my academic work, as well as just be a part of my congregational life and in service to the city, we have encountered a great deal of homelessness in our locality. We have found that we have housed people from veterans to people living in domestic abuse, to people who work at CW, to teachers in our school system. And a lot of our neighbors are only a few steps away from some sort of eviction, and having some sense of affordable housing or workforce housing could be a great benefit to many. I do believe that a grassroots, trauma-informed, community development approach that can include evidence-based coordinated systems of care can be explored. I am confident in the work of the people that I have heard is going to be a part of this, that we can come up with something meaningful and specific and quite possibly, and I think necessarily innovative for our locality. There will always be faith communities willing to work in this endeavor. There will always be social services and human services agencies working in this endeavor. You are, we are very fortunate and blessed to have the Department of Human Services and the people that work there. They are unsung heroes in our community, and I applaud them for their work, and I know that this would be a great support to them as well. So I just wanted, as a citizen, to go on record to say thank you, and please keep pressing on in this issue, and let's continue to be innovative in our approach rather than just being complicit to other approaches that did or did not work in compromising rare, unique locality with unique economic challenges. And it's going to take a unique and innovative approach to solve this problem for our neighbors. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address council? Seeing no one, I'll close the open forum. I believe we have item for closed session?
Yes, sir. I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing one personal matter per Subparagraph 1 concerning appointments to boards and commissions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bertram?
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Council will take a brief recess and reconvene in closed session.